Well, welcome everyone to the new City Hall campus. I hope that you're as excited to be here as the council and city staff are so excited to be in this new facility. It's been a long time in coming. And we will have a more formal presentation on Saturday morning. So just in case you haven't heard, 10:00 AM at the fire station, we're going to have a short, very short ribbon cutting and dedication, and then we will have tours of the facility. So hopefully you can all attend then. You don't hear me? We'll talk loud. Do you hear me now? Okay. Do you hear me now? There's no light.
Yeah, there is.
It's on the back.
I think they're all on.
Okay. Sorry about that. So I was gonna just talk a little louder. But any regard, this is a momentous occasion, first day at City Hall, and here we are having our first city council meeting already. With that, just as a reminder, if you have cell phones, we all do, please turn them off or unvibrate so they don't disrupt the proceedings here tonight. So the first item, of course, is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please rise for that pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Goguen's in the room, I see. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Board of Canvas Meeting, which is required under state law for us to recognize the results of the election.
Your honor, can you hear me, members of the council? General election was held on November 6th to select candidates for the offices of Council Members Wards One, Two, and Three. State law says that the city council must canvass the results between three and 10 days after the election. On the canvas report, I've included the total number of ballots cast in the city for this election, which was 11,875. The total number of votes for each candidate, a true copy of the ballot, and the names of the election judges as required. There were a total of 15,973 registered voters at 7:00 AM and 1,081 Election Day registrations between Election Day and absentee ballot voting, for a total number of registered voters of 17,054. Of those registered voters, 11,875 cast a ballot in the city, giving the city a 70% voter turnout, which is usually high. It's actually about 10% more than a similar election four years ago. So it was a good turnout for the city. Those individuals that voted at the polling places on Election Day consisted of about 81% of the turnout, and those voting by absentee was 19%. And that, those numbers are similar to the 2016 presidential election. The individuals that were elected in Ward One is Tom Tilbury, in Ward Two, Steve Egert, and Ward Three, Ann Balkum. Staff recommends a motion accepting and certifying the results of the election.
Thank you, Ms. Goguen. And just so those in the audience, Steve Egert, you wanna wave or raise your hand there. Steve Egert was newly elected. Tom Tilbury was newly elected. And of course, we all recognize Council Member Ann Balkum being back in the, back in the seat again. So with that, there should be a motion and a second to approve the ballot?
I would move that we approve the November 6th general election statement of canvas.
Second.
Are we accepting and certifying the results?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, accepted and certifying, and I heard a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goguen.
Thank you, and congratulations to all members who are newly elected.
The sheet's going around someplace?
We've all signed it already.
You already did?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and now on to our regular council meeting. The first item on tonight's agenda is a Heart Safe Community Designation, and our Chief of Police, Brian Werke, is gonna give us a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight's a special night. It's an initiative that we started in 2018, our Police and Fire Public Safety Department, to become a heart safe community. And we were able to achieve that in 2018, and I would like to introduce a couple of guests that wanna talk a little bit about heart safe. Our Dr. Charles Lick from Director of Alina, and also Brian Platts from Coon Rapids to come up. So if you guys would come on up.
Good evening, thanks for having us. My name is Charlie Lick, I'm Medical Director of Alina Health EMS. I'm also an emergency physician up at Unity Hospital here. Back in 2000, within Alina, I started our Heart Safe Communities Program, where we helped place automated external defibrillators and trained citizens how to do CPR. A number of years after doing that, Kim Harkins was our program manager, and she really started this Heart Safe Community Designation. And Brian's gonna talk a little bit more about that, but there's over 120 communities across the state that are either heart safe community designated or are in the process of doing so. So they're safer for their citizens, and Brian's gonna talk about some history about that. Sudden cardiac arrest is a huge problem in this country. It strikes over 400,000 people. The average survival rate in most communities across the state, or excuse me, the nation, is 5% to 7%. We've got some of the highest survival rates in the country right here in Minnesota, certainly within our communities that we serve at Alina. And Officer Platts has done a wonderful job up in the North Metro here, really extending this on. So let's hear what you've been up to, too.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us in your Taj Mahal. This is, I got, I'm jealous of your guys' new chambers in PD.
We might have some openings.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I'll think about that. Don't tell my chief, though. This really started three years ago. Chief, come on up here. I'd like you to be a part of this. Then Officer, get up, get the heart safety, get up here, guys. This is for you guys. So this really started in earnest about three years ago at a first aid training where the chief and I were attending, and he was asking about, you know, what is this heart safe thing? How do we do it? Heart Safe Communities is a grassroots effort. What we do with Heart Safe Communities is we teach the public how to manage a cardiac arrest. What can they do while they're waiting for help? You know, as emergency services, as police officers, as firefighters, our job, most of the time when it comes to cardiac arrest, is simply to arrive at a death scene, because the wrong things are being done leading up to our arrival. The public doesn't know what to do, they're too afraid to know what to do, and this, and this was bothersome to Chief Werke. So we worked together in earnest. Slow process to get it going, but last December, I believe, is when we officially submitted that paperwork to start working on the city of Fridley and get it designated. So what we do is we teach the public hands-only CPR. But if you think about it, that's the most critical link to survival, is the public. What are you doing while you're waiting for us to show up? We're losing patients in minutes because of the damage done to the brain because of the lack of circulation. So simply teaching the public to push on that chest, to get that circulation going, to keep that brain healthy enough for us to be effective, really is a critical link in that puzzle. So I know you're gonna go over some stats in a little bit. I'd actually like to, for you to introduce them, and then we'll get to the official designation. But I'll tell ya, what they've done is nothing less than remarkable. I've done dozens of communities, I've helped dozens of cities in the state, overseas, California as well, and only three really stand out to me. Your city, Brooklyn Center, East Bethel, and Chino, California. Of those cities, this one stands right up there with probably the most robust and aggressive programs that I've ever helped, or the honor to help. So Chief, I'll let you go over some of your highlights.
Thank you, Officer Platts. And when he said those cities, he said them in order, Fridley was number one, I think, is what he said. First, I wanna, I wanna introduce some of our staff. So when, this obviously was done by our staff mainly, and I wanna introduce you to them. Officer John Cochin was the one that started this back in December of 2017, and he took the lead and got to training and worked with Brian on getting the training up. And then Nico Wallett, Officer Nico Wallett then stepped up and also helped out as two phenomenal leaders in this whole initiative, without question. Our Crime Prevention Specialist, Courtney Miller, as most of you already know, was currently on medical leave, but actually came in with her baby just to celebrate this time because it meant so much to her. So it was great to have her in here. We also have Officer Sean Murphy and Officer Patrick Faber. And the one thing you'll notice, there's three Fridley kids in here. So you can see why we hire Fridley kids. They take a special investment in their city and their community, and all of them, this is a volunteer thing. And when I ask for volunteers, our Fridley guys are always one stepping up and helping their community. So that's why they're here today, and they deserve all of the credit. And I give all of them the credit, I'm very proud of them. There were also other instructors that could not be here today. We started in December of 2017. All the city departments in Fridley were trained in bystander CPR, by our trainers. We had public trainings every third Tuesday of the month. Our numbers increased each month of training. We also did our schools, our middle schools, we did our 49ers Day Carnival, our safety camp. It was our Night to Unite theme this year, where we went around and talked a lot about heart safe at our Night to Unite, where we taught over 500 citizens. Also, our local businesses received CPR training at no cost. On average, at least two businesses a week held some of our trainings. One of the most recent trainings was held at Medtronic, where we trained 150 people in bystander CPR. We were required to get 600 heartbeats of training. We were able to achieve 1,200 in less than a year. So I'm very proud, on behalf of the Public Safety, Police, and Fire Departments, I'm very proud of our instructors, very proud of this program, and if we can just save one life, all of this has been worth it. So with that, thank you, and I know Officer Platts has something special for the city mayor.
Thanks for having us. I think it's important to note, they needed 600 points to get the designation, to get that recognition from the Minnesota Department of Health. They could've easily turned this in months ago and been designated. They didn't. They took my advice, I said, don't just meet the criteria, smash the criteria. They did double what was required of them. So that's what this means to these guys. And so Officer Cochin, Officer Wallett, the team back behind, these guys are rock stars. And this is gonna be a very successful program for years to come because of their efforts. So I think really, they need to be recognized. So with that, we would like to formally recognize the city of Fridley as a heart safe community. So with, as an acting member of the Minnesota Heart Safe Committee, it is my honor and privilege to designate the city of Fridley as a heart safe community through the Department of Minnesota Department of Health. So we would like to accept, we should make this a team picture. Let's get the whole council up here, let's get the team together, right up front.
Do you want us to stand up? Yep, 'cause I always, hey, John.
You should probably squeeze as much as you can.
Stand behind doors.
So these, these street signs are men not approved, and so they are, they are legal to hang, you'll let you guys work out amongst yourselves, but this is sign envy. If you've ever driven through Coon Rapids or these other cities, this is the first thing that you see. So we want other communities to know that this is what you guys have, and we want, we want to challenge the neighborhood communities to do better, to be difficult, you guys have. Very high bar for that. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, council. Congratulations.
I officially passed the sign over for the street sign to our Public Works Director, Jim Kozlucher, and said, find a good home for it. So we certainly appreciate them coming out tonight, Chief, and thanks for the presentation. Just another one of those feathers in the police department's hat for all their efforts in making us a safer community. Greatly appreciated. The next item on tonight's agenda is the usual proposed consent agenda, and our city manager will give us that overview.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item we have are the city council meeting minutes of October 22nd. We have a second reading of an ordinance to amend the city code of the city of Fridley by making a change in our zoning districts. This will be for a general P to, or I'm sorry, at 6050 Main Street, generally speaking, and it's from a P zoning to an S2 by Sherman Associates Development LLC. We have a second reading of an ordinance making a text amendment to the city code pertaining to outside storage in the R1 through R4 districts and the S1 zoning districts. We have the receipt of minutes of the Planning Commission for October 17. We have approval of a preliminary plat with Sherman and Associates Development LLC, creating separate lots for the proposed redevelopment on 6050 Main Street. Approval of a capital project agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for smart salting best management practices. Approval of memorandum of understanding and agreement for a federal equitable sharing for the Anoka Henepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force, which our police department participates in. Receipt of the Twin Cities Gateway Fiscal Year for 2019 annual budget. We have claims and licenses for massage therapy at various locations, and that's a consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Roy Sobel. Are the, any of these proposed consent agenda items that the council wishes to remove for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove number two, and I just have a few questions on number six. And then one question on the licenses? If I can just ask that question.
Okay, you said you, let's move item number two to eleven.
Eleven B.
Eleven B.
Okay.
And you had a question on number five.
Nope, number, number six.
Okay, so number six, okay, so.
And then I had a question about the.
Number five should probably move to eleven C?
It'd be number six, yeah.
Say that one again.
Didn't you want number five removed?
Nope.
Okay. I get that.
No, I think, that's number six, yes. And then one question on the licenses. There's licenses, but the massage, there's one massage, there's not one reflected, there's therapists that are not, the Dir Massage doesn't have anyone under as a massage therapist, and that might be a Ms. Goguen question, but we're approving licenses for all these businesses, but there's no massage therapist? We would expect that under, the Dir Massage does not have someone?
We could find that out for it.
Okay, so can we just, should we?
Well, I'm sure it's appropriate if it's here, but why there's a, not a therapist in business license, there might be very, various extenuating circumstances for that.
Right, but can you have a massage thing without at least one?
You wanna remove this one and then approve the rest? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, I'm just asking the question, can you have a massage therapy business without a therapist that's licensed? I thought they went hand in hand.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Council Member Balkum, I believe you do need, we made that change recently, and I believe we did need a therapist, but I would have to look into that more.
So is there any value of holding this off until the next meeting, or does it have to be approved tonight? To ask that question, or approve it without the Dir Massage? I'm just not knowing those answers, sorry.
I think it'd be more appropriate if you just moved, removed the one for further consideration and approved the rest of them, because it may affect their license.
So let's remove it, we'll have to remove it in order, let's just move it, maybe move it to eleven D then?
Okay, eleven C then.
I think we've got eleven B and eleven C already.
Yeah, eleven D.
Eleven D, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number six you wanted removed, okay, that's, let's see. Okay, are there any persons in the audience that wish to remove any of the remaining proposed consent agendas for further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, the motion would be in order.
Okay, with the removal of item two and placing it as eleven B, item six as eleven C, and the business licenses to eleven D, I'll move approval of the proposed consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, the motion carries. Next item is open forum. This is for visitors in the room that wish to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda. Anybody? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on. Adoption of the agenda, of tonight's agenda would be in order.
So if it's so, in order, I move to adopt the agenda with the additions of eleven B, eleven C, and eleven D.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, the motion carries. This leads us to item number 11 under new business. Is that you, Scott?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, item 11 on the agenda is personnel ordinance and its entirety.
I was gonna say, I think it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't have that agenda with me.
Scott, you got a new job, you need to know. New, new building.
She'll be much better than I, trust me.
Well, he was at the desk and you weren't, so.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Well, thank you. I have a short presentation for you tonight. I do not have a PowerPoint for you to review, so hopefully it will be quick so you can get on to other matters, but I'm happy to be one of the first presenters in this new City Hall, so I'm really grateful for that. It's a wonderful opportunity. I have to say, staff are really proud and very happy of this facility and all the work that went in. So it's really just an honor for me to be up here, and I'm grateful for this, this chance. I'm here to make a request to the Personnel Ordinance, Fridley City Code, Chapter Three, which involves our personnel matters. The background and the details of that suggested change have been provided to you in your packet. Staff is recommending a motion waiving the reading and ordering the first reading of an ordinance amending Fridley City Code, Chapter Three, entitled Personnel, as shown in Attachment One. Essentially, it's replacing the entire ordinance that's there. As we mentioned in the cover letter to you, the city personnel policies really are encompassed in the ordinance, and that was done many, many years ago. Because it's an ordinance, though, it is cumbersome to change, or replace, or make amendments. As a result, it's been very difficult for us to really make changes to keep pace with the market, to keep pace with many of the laws that changed, for instance, ACA, and some of the healthcare reform laws, and then also to update with union negotiations and things that changed throughout the years. So we're simply asking to request that the city manager be given full authority and power to make those changes, to enforce the administrative policies, and then also create any new policies that might be unnecessary going forward. So the language change is listed in your packet. Once the, once adopted, after the second reading, staff will be proposing a couple amendments that we have in our current personnel policies. One is to add a holiday to our non-union staff. Non-union employees currently have 11 city holidays. The, or the unions have 12, which were added back in 2017 with our negotiations, if you recall. So we'd be asking for that, the city manager to replace or change that policy. And then we'd also be asking them to, asking him to designate that policy for December 31st of this year, so that would be giving credit to employees for 2018. Going forward, then, we'd convert that to a floating holiday where employees could use it at their own discretion, so. The other item we'd be proposing to the city manager after this resolution is changed is to increase the annual leave maximum cap that we have on the books, which is 240 hours now, and we're asking to increase that to 320. And both of those policies would reflect or line up with what the unions are currently getting that were adopted in 2017. So that's simply all I have for you tonight. I can take any questions that you have.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
On page 97, you're talking about increasing the paid holidays and so on. And again, it says, again, the bigger priority for both of these requests are to bring the same benefits for non-union employees as all already provided for union groups. Do the non-union employees pay a fair share?
Pay a fair share for our union dues?
Yes.
No, they do not.
You do not?
No.
But they get the same benefits?
Well, we're talking about the non-union, the non-bargaining unions, they, they would be a separate policy than the unions. So unions, I don't believe there are anybody in the union that are taking the benefits without paying their, their union dues, so. But in the non-union side of the house, where there are no unions, they are not paying any dues, and the union, or the benefits are different for those two.
Oh, they are different?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that's what we're asking tonight, is to line up the non-union benefits with the union benefits.
That's what I thought, that's why I was wondering if they had to pay a fair share.
They do not.
Even though the union negotiate.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Barnett, do you have a problem with that?
Yeah, a little bit. I think that I go back to my own background in the unions and the schools, and they have a controversy going on constantly with that about people who are benefiting from all of the union negotiations, salaries and so on, who don't pay union dues, but they receive all the benefits. And the fair share says they should pay a portion of that to receive the same benefits, and I just question if that was true here.
Well, they're not, all of the benefits are perfectly aligned. I would say that generally speaking, health and dental benefits and the general health vacation packages, things like that, are generally the same. But there are some things that the unions do that are different and are separated out. For instance, court pay, or some of the overtime rules and comp time rules, those are different than what the non-union enjoys.
What percentage of the city staff are unionized?
So I wouldn't say I know the percent exactly, but we have about 35 or so in the police patrol union, six in the sergeants, or seven, I should say, and then three in our fire union, so just about 50.
Okay.
So that would be about a third of the group.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't see any problem with it. It seems to me you become divisive, divisive if you don't. And granted, there's still things that they're negotiating as a union, and they're still being represented for lots of different issues related to payment and some of the other things that Deb has mentioned, and to me, you're a regular playing field across the board. And Bob, I was in a union for many, many years, but I guess I'd see no problem with other people getting some very similar things, 'cause overall, it's still for the good of the city and the employees, so. I guess it doesn't make sense that one gets more holidays than the next, for an example.
That's probably true, but the union people are paying dues, and they are doing the negotiations, and the other people are getting the same benefits for nothing.
Well, not the same benefits all the way across the board.
Right, right.
Not all the same benefits, like I mentioned, there are some that are just afforded to the unions and the protections that's awarded to them under collective bargaining, so. So there are added protections that the unions get that non-unions, you know, find a different path to achieve grievances and things like that.
We're basically talking about carryover of vacation, holiday pay, having the same amount of holidays, and an annual cap.
Yep.
So it's not everything, for sure.
Hey, Bob, if there's really a concern, I guess the point would be then, what I take from your discussion here is, if the unions not, they're paying into union dues, and if they're getting the same thing as you feel is non-union, then I guess those union members maybe just wanna dissolve their union and become non-union since they're getting the same.
I don't think so.
Well, okay, so, but that's basically what you're telling me, that you're not getting any benefit as a union employee versus a non-union, so why keep paying the dues? That's not gonna happen, but I'm saying, that's what I'm gathering from your inference, so.
Or you could do it the opposite way and say, all the non-union members will start paying union dues, and they don't wanna do that either.
Well, that's the issue, and I, Tom Tilbury's sitting out there, too, and I think Tom maybe agrees with me. When I was a union leader at the schools, we were very concerned that people that are more than willing to accept everything that the union negotiated and paid nothing, and that didn't seem fair.
Yes, well.
Your Honor, I thought I'd jump into the fray here and just let you know that this was just being as one point of comparison of one particular benefit that's being enjoyed by city of Fridley employees, and true that they are unionized, but it also, in a comparison to other cities of non-unionized employees, this benefit is much, is lesser, and that's why we wanna bring it up, too. So it's more of a market rate comparison. We're not trying to create a union versus non-union environment.
Absolutely not, I don't wanna do that either.
And we appreciate what you're saying, but we just want to say that that's just one comparison, was what some of the union employees are getting, but it wasn't the driving force for this. It's also what's happening within the area, within our market rate of the metro area, for non-union positions as well, and that there are, as the mayor and others have pointed out, many differences in terms and conditions of employment that are in the labor agreements that are not enjoyed by our non-union employees as well. So, I didn't want it to go down that route, but we respect what you're saying.
If this has not been a controversial issue within the city, I should shut up. And I will.
Well said, huh? Okay. All right, if there's any other discussion, a motion would be in order.
I move a motion to waive the reading and order the first reading of an ordinance amending Fridley City Code, Chapter Three, entitled Personnel, as found on pages ninety-eight through one hundred.
Second.
Are we adopting the resolution, Attachment Two, on ninety-nine and one hundred at the same time? Or that's coming later?
No, that's coming later, after the second reading.
Basically, I think we're just approving page ninety-eight.
Excuse me?
Sorry, should I start over?
So, don't include the pages ninety.
Should I start over? No?
I don't think it's necessary, I think that just say you omit ninety-nine, pages ninety-nine and one hundred.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, is that all right? Is that okay with our recording secretary? Okay, can't see you, so. Everybody in agreement with that? Do we have a second?
I've seconded.
I've seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? And as you stated, this will come back for a second reading, and then after that, then we will have discussion and either approve or disapprove of the new resolution on page ninety-nine and one hundred. That's what I heard, okay.
You got it, very good. When is the second reading?
It should be in the next meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Under new business now, item number eleven B, which was item two from consent, Councilmember Balkum.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hickok, we had a little bit of discussion during our pre-meeting, but I was a little surprised that at this juncture, that we had this change, and I guess I would like to hear maybe from the representatives here, because as we discussed earlier, my concern is there's less underground parking, which I know that there's been all these studies, so I want them to get up in front of us and tell us how they arrived at, there's enough spaces, enough underground parking spaces, and that there's now going to be thirty-six new surface spots, and that's a much better picture than we had in our agenda packet, so maybe how it arrived at that. And we all are a little leery, I think, as we discussed earlier, that we've had another project in our community where they had underground parking, and then they had a fair amount of surface parking lot, and the people that live there, the tenants that live there are not, are parking out on the street, and also the concern, of course, there's a building right, a business right next door, Parsons Electric, so maybe if they could come up, because it's new to us that it's changing, it's the, it makes sense, I think it makes sense that you need to do it for a business sense, that you're going to change the, but maybe just get up and talk, talk so the visiting, the audience here and the visitors at home can understand what this project, how this project has changed since our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Carol Mette is here from the Sherman and Associates, as well as their architect, and I would leave it to their discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us here today, I'm Carol Mette, hopefully you guys can hear me okay. With Sherman Associates, and this is Rico Williams with Cass Wilson. So, I guess just to give kind of the story of how this change came about, we, when we started really digging into the site plan this spring, and from really the get-go, our plan was to have the senior project be three stories. And at the time, we also, you know, went through some preliminary construction pricing with our contractor, without really any detail, it was more of a per-unit type of estimate that we've been basing off of. Just a couple of weeks ago, we received more detailed pricing that was really based on the specific schematics that we developed, counting in the amount of common area we had in the senior project and the number of amenities there, and the pricing for the senior project was significantly higher than what we had expected, and also just as a comparison to the market rate project, there was, was it twenty thousand a unit? I might, I might be wrong there, but it was a pretty significant difference in the cost. We had some discussions internally about how we could, you know, the project wouldn't work at that level, so we went through some ideas, some discussing kind of simplifying the architecture, but at the end of the day, the biggest thing that would help would be to change the project to four stories, which is a smaller footprint, the cost of the foundation and the concrete and the underground parking is really what's, what's one of the larger pieces of the overall budget, so you have a smaller proportion of that now, per unit, comparing that. So, we made that change, and it's something that's, the four-story for the senior is actually what we normally do. You know, it's nicer to have more underground parking, as we can all imagine, but our other, two other senior projects that we've opened, actually we've had grand openings in the last two months, one in Maplewood and then one actually in Milwaukee, they're both four stories with underground parking, designed by Cass Wilson Architects, so they're very similar product, similar common area and amenities, so it's not uncommon for us to do that, and all of those projects, I think, range from point eight to point eight-five stalls, underground, per unit.
Point eight to what, did you say?
Point eight to point eight-five underground, per unit. Overall, our parking ratio, what I believe is one point five to one, has not changed. We made up for those lost underground stalls now with additional surface stalls, so we're not, we've not lost any parking, we've just changed twenty-six stalls or so from underground to being now surface stalls.
I think it's thirty-six, according to.
Thirty-six, yeah.
Yeah, originally.
What's in our packet, anyway?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I said, in our packet, it says thirty-six, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that when we had first laid out the site plan, it was done almost two years, two years ago to the day, back in 2016, and we had laid out a three-story building which aligned with other similar buildings within the marketplace, but things have changed between 2016 and 2018, the cost of construction has gone up in ways that we couldn't predict, ways that are very unexpected. But thankfully, by working closely with our general contractor, we were able to come up with a solution to allow for a building that would reach the certain price point that we need to be at, and the four-story building is the ticket, so. By having the smaller footprint, it did allow us to reclaim a good amount of surface parking stalls, so there's just no reduction, it's a relocation of these parking stalls.
And I think the packet showed a comparison between the two versions, hopefully you were able to see that, but basically, it's just not as long as it used to be, otherwise, there's no, no change from the previous version.
Andy, have any other questions?
Well, I guess I just, you know, I'm a senior, I guess now, so I just think, and obviously you base this on other products that you have, that you've recently built, I just think, gosh, it's only one per, there's gonna be a hundred and nine, I think, if I read later in the packet here, a hundred and nine undergrounds, so does each unit get one, or how does that work, or is it based on what type of unit I have? How many I get, do I pay extra for an underground spot? Because we did have that, you know, poor Scott hears this all the time, about one of the other projects that we have in our community where we had some of those issues, because they were being charged a rather large rate, I think, for underground parking, so can you go through that a little bit more to?
Sure, you know, we do plan to charge for underground parking, and that rate is based off of kind of a market study that we do, and also, we, it's really a supply-demand type situation. If nobody's leasing the underground parking, that means we're charging too much. We don't want everybody parking on the street, so we, we find the right balance.
On the street?
Sorry, on the, well, yeah, exactly, we don't want anybody parking on the street either, and we feel we have plenty of parking for everybody to be on the site. The underground parking is typically first come, first served, when it comes to leasing. But when we have, I mean, when we have less than one per unit, we may restrict a unit from renting more than one, if the parking reaches a certain level of occupancy.
So, there's no, I guess that's the only concern, is that you say that they have, there is a charge for it, so what would prevent, you know, someone having two cars and put him in the lot and filling the lot, filling the lot up with more than what it can bear, and then now parking out on the street?
Mm-hmm, you know, and again, it's a state of equilibrium that we find with the market demand, so we want to ensure that this, you know, we want to be enticing people to, we'd rather have, you know, five, sorry, all parking spots full at a certain rate than twenty-five percent of them full at a much higher rate, because we'd still get more, it's our incentive to fill the garage, and so we do so, just really based on what the market demand is for, for the rent down there.
Okay, with the, with the thirty additional surface spots, the green space really doesn't increase, does it?
No.
It's, does it stay the same as it was in the proposed plan before?
I don't have the impervious surface calculations, but I know we reduced the building footprint and then increased the amount of pavement, so I'm not sure what that exact calculation is.
Yeah, our best guess is that it's roughly a one-to-one ratio with what we had before, and where we are, where we are at now, but.
So, we didn't lose any green space, is that what you're telling, or is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, the area that would have been taken up by the footprint has now just been relocated to surface parking stalls throughout the site, so we would have to do exact calculations to be sure how that is impacted, but it is roughly the same.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, so I take it, you'd say whatever the market rate will bear. You already got a figure for what you believe that the market rate will bear here, not just for the apartments, but for the indoor parking. Can you tell me what that rate, as you, right now, what the plan is for that rate? Which can fluctuate, but.
Yeah, it certainly fluctuates and depends on sort of what the competition is doing, but we're estimating between fifty and seventy-five a month.
Okay, and the reason why we're bringing this up quite frankly is because we have an issue already in Fridley with a newer apartment complex, and it's not working well in my mind as far as the parking, because they have underground and they have extra, you know, surface parking, people don't want to pay the extra, so they all move outside, and so now they're infiltrating the residential area, and we're getting complaints of that. So, we think that it's a poor management of the parking situation. I also am concerned about the parking situation here, because in my estimation, they don't plan enough for, you get it, you got the point three or point eight or whatever on the apartments, it's numbers that don't just come out of the air, they're planned for, and the market forces, and it might even be nationwide numbers, but I never see that they really plan for gas. You know, I mean, there's a lot of apartment buildings here, and on certain days, you know, they, they're, you know, birthday parties, Thanksgiving, whatever, and where all that parking happened, I, it doesn't seem to me that there's enough parking, because in my estimation, everybody that's sixteen and over, you gotta plan for a car. Now, I know there's some trends I'm hearing about, and I do see some of that with different types of transit. We're trying to make the, our city more and more and more less dependent, is that an axymore? We're making it less dependent, hopefully, on vehicles by creating alternative modes of transportation, biking routes, sidewalks, yada, yada, so there is some concern about these larger projects going up and not really providing enough space for parking.
Um, so.
In the presentation, why Councilwoman Balkum brings up the fact about, does this increase green space? Because it's in our packet, it says, you know, it alludes to that you re-engineered this to make it less expensive for you to build, because you don't have to have, by making a smaller footprint, so ergo, you gain green space, but you're also taking green space away because you're adding parking, so.
Yeah.
It's probably a one-to-one ratio, I don't think we gained much there, so.
No, I think it's a net wash, and I'd like to characterize what you just kind of said. This change wasn't just to make this less expensive for us as the developer, it is in order to make this project financially feasible. At a three-story, we would not be able to move forward with the senior project at all, so I think it's a matter of really whether or not we're able to do this project. We're, with most of the projects Sherman does, and especially this one, we're really going for an amenity-rich package with high-end finishes, we plan for this to be really the best apartment option, not only in Fridley, but kind of in the surrounding area, and we're planning on attracting the type of tenant who's living here because of the amenities, not because it's the cheapest place to live. So, that's all sort of factored into how we sort of approach the development. And on the, on the parking ratio, what, what really, we do, and what I do as a developer is really, we lean on our management group, we own and manage over six thousand units, so we take, we have a lot of data to take from when it comes to, here's what they tell me, this is how much parking you need to have. That ratio, when we talk about one point five to one, that factors in, it accounts for visitors, so it's really about, it's not necessarily, oh, we have, this is how many cars of the units that we're parking, it's more of a factor of, all right, here's how many units we have at this building, and here's how many stalls we have, that includes the stalls for visitors and what the overall blended ratio is. So, that does factor into how we're looking at whether it's enough parking. I know that with the transit lot, there's always the availability to have a discussion down the road if there needed to be some sort of parking sharing agreement. I think that it's too soon in the game for us to really come up, we have no need to enter a parking agreement with Metro Transit at this time, I don't think they're, I think they'd rather, you know, put that off too until we knew what, what, if any, situation there is, but the nice thing about this site is that that's certainly always a backup option that we have, where you don't have, you know, you have residents who need to park there at night, and they don't need to park there during the day, which works out really well with the Metro Lot.
And it's good that you brought it up, because it was gonna be my question, do you have any concerns about the use of somebody else's property, the additional parking there for Metro Transit? And that may be difficult at best to get the two parties to come together for, you know, proof of parking, or having some type of a residual reciprocal agreement, maybe? But that may not work. My mind, it's probably a good likelihood it won't work.
The indications we've got is that it's not their preference to enter into a parking sharing agreement right now, but they're, they're open to the discussion.
They are open to it.
Yeah.
Well, Scott, may I just?
I don't want to speak for them.
Speak, just to add on to that question, but I should hope that we would not do this project if we're counting on that someday we might need to, might talk to Metro Transit about sharing property, because we're getting into a mess then. I think, I think any project we have, you should be controlling your own parking on your own property, so even you saying that gives me qualms about this, is that I don't think we should think that we're gonna be able to share something with, and who knows, maybe more people will start riding the train from here, so I guess I'm, you make me nervous when you say that, that you would think that maybe down the line, we could work something out with them, and we definitely don't want you to, I, it wouldn't be any different, we're not treating you any different than I think we're treating anyone else that, whatever kind of business or property they have, that they need to have, control their own parking, so. And going back to the amenity thing, gosh, I guess, I, I don't know, you live in Minnesota, and not having underground parking would, to me, be something that I sure would want to, that's, I would think that would bring people here if you had enough, where someone might want to be able to have two underground parking spots, but I'm not.
Well, I took it, and also in her comments a moment or two ago, that it's really not dependent on, it's not that they're trying to cheapen the building, which I didn't really mean to allude to that, with the amenities that you're probably, you know, you're talking about, it's the bank. If you're gonna exceed, if you're gonna succeed in this project, you had to make changes, because the banks got the first strings, and the bank ultimately has basically the final say whether this project proceeds or not.
Right, and underground parking, we know is expensive, so.
Extremely.
And I just want to comment that I fully agree with your comments about the parking, and we're here telling you that we designed the site and the amount of units that we. and we're here telling you that we designed this site and the amount of units that we have on the site with the proper amount of parking in mind and we're not depending on the Metro Lot. It's just something that hopefully, you know, again, as you guys are, seem to be very concerned with the amount we have. We're not at all concerned. I want to reiterate that. And we feel very strong that the 1.5 to one ratio we have is plenty and we're long-term owners. We're not, we're not building this to sell it off and so you know we're going to be here.
Which we think is awesome. We, we appreciate that point, so.
Okay, I'm not really concerned about three stories or four because the other buildings are already at four. So it's not like they're going higher than the other ones. My other question is, so you're minimizing the footprint on, looks like mostly from the senior apartments. And you've reconfigured the other two buildings, but looks like you've gained some and lost some there. Are you losing parking stalls inside those buildings as well?
No. The parking counts that we proposed for the other two buildings are the same as we proposed.
So the big difference was on the senior apartment. I'm cautiously saying that, thinking that they, this'll work, but I'm also, don't want to have the problems that we've already experienced. There's some uniquenesses or differences in this property and the configuration than the other one that we're having. Just don't want to have the complaints is the big thing, so.
I think they went on record that.
Yeah, I did. So any other council, questions from council?
Plus our, plus our director of planning is also saying it's different. It's a, the other one was more unique property. This is a unique property in a different way, in a good way. The other one was just long and narrow, so.
Okay, I don't know if we've made any decisions with our discussion here now, but.
Is there any other questions from council?
Okay, none. So let's see how it falls. You biting your nails yet?
We're excited about this. We're ready to go.
We're excited about it too. It's just, you know, I think we're very, very excited through the first two processes and then we get our council packet and we're like, oh, there's been a change here and we're changing this and this. And so we need to embrace it too. So that's why we're asking questions.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I know it's sort of, we threw a little kink in, in the process here.
A little kink?
But really what the changes from what we've had in the previous meetings is from the three to four and we just moved the underground stalls now to the surface.
Well, just so you know, at first blush, I thought, are they trying to, is somebody trying to sneak something in on us between the first reading and the second reading? Is when we noticed a significant change in the parking. So I'm just wondering, why wasn't this in beforehand? That's my, my, so I feel a little bit more comfortable after this discussion in our conference room and then now in the council meeting. But when I see those types of things, it, the, the flag goes up.
And we had not, we had made the decision internally to make this change between the last, this meeting and the previous meeting. We had not contemplated it at, at the previous one.
Well, so in other words, the bank said it doesn't cash flow good enough for them to be comfortable, so you had to make changes.
Well, it was, it was close work with our general contractor too, who we have a very strong relationship with.
Just so you understand where we're, where I'm coming from anyways and that when I see a, a significant change in between first and second readings, they're just kind of slipping this in.
Yeah, it's not our preference either.
All right.
Okay, and on that note, I move to approve a second reading of an ordinance to amend the city code of the city of Fridley, Minnesota by making the change in the zoning district's rezoning request, 18-04 by Sherman Associates Development LLC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Since you're ready to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are they here for all?
Yes.
Okay. Well, wasn't that close after all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and it looks like we're going to have something else coming up here later on in the agenda. Next item is 11C, which was also removed from consent, item number six, Councilmember Bulcom.
I, I mainly removed this because I think it needs to, just to put you on the spot there, Mr. Kuzliger. I, I think this is an incredible project and I think people need to know more about it than just the little brief thing that was done during, during the consent agenda. And I know you probably don't have a, or do we have a presentation? Okay. Expecting that might happen, okay. I did have a couple of questions too, but, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bulcom. Rachel Workin has a, prepared a.
Can the audience hear?
Brief presentation on this.
I don't know, is your mic on?
I think so. It's green, so. There we go. Anyway, Rachel Workin, our environmental planner, who did the application with my staff for the grant, has a presentation that she's going to provide you.
Mayor Lund, council members, I do have a surprise presentation already to go. We're very excited about this. We believe this is a really important step forward for the city. I'm here to tonight, tonight to present some information regarding a smart salting grant that we've received from the MW, from the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization and to request that council authorize the approval of this grant. This grant pertains to the city's winter maintenance practices. The city is responsible for keeping 108 miles of roads safe for winter driving. We operate seven plows within our fleet. These plows are equipped with manually controlled salt spreaders. So the driver of the plow is setting the amount of salt based on a relative scale from the dash of his truck. And the salt spreaders drop dry salt onto the road. And this system involves two pretty big inefficiencies. One, since it has to be manually controlled by the driver, it's very difficult to adjust while operating the vehicle, which means that the driver is usually unable to adjust the amount of salt relative to their speed. Also because the salt is dropped in its dry form, it needs to mix with ice on the road in order to activate. So it usually needs to come into contact with some sort of liquid in order to chemically activate. So there's that time in which drivers are driving over that dry salt where it isn't working at its peak efficiency until it's fully activated. Also because the salt is released in a dry form, it can bounce outside of the intended area, going into ditches or on the side of the road, accumulating in low spots, things like that. And, and this is a big deal. There's a lot of new science, a lot of old science, a lot of future science. It's really confirming that salt has a lot of very negative water quality impacts. One teaspoon of salt permanently pollutes five gallons of water. Salt is incredibly expensive to remove. And this salt impacts aquatic life. It can shift the fish composition within our waterways. And some cities have even found that it's impacting their drinking water, that cities that are relying on, that with salt and elevated concentrations in their drinking water, it can actually be tasted by their residents. Fifty Minnesota lakes and streams are on the state's impaired list for chlorides. Spring Brook Creek is listed as vulnerable for chloride impairment. And the impacts aren't only ecological. Putting down, salt is also very expensive for the city. Last year, we spent over $51,000 on road salt and due to a, some, I guess some strikes. There, there is a limited salt this year compared to previous years and the cost of salt has gone up between 18 and 19% from last year to this year. The MPCA estimates that 78% of winter maintenance salt falls, is transported into ground and surface water. And putting too much salt down doesn't make it safer. It just causes more negative impacts. Increased salt has diminishing returns. There is a concentration of salt where it doesn't become any more effective. So rather than putting down more salt, the solution is to smart-saltly. And the MPCA has developed a list of best management practices for cities to use in order to decrease the amount of salt that they put down on their roads without sacrificing road safety. When we constructed the new public works facility, we constructed space to make a brine-making system. This mixing system allows the city to make a liquid form of salt, which can be put on the road, sprayed on the road at the same time the dry salt is released. This brine salt activates the salt upon contact, so it doesn't have to mix with ice on the road in order to activate. And because of that, it acts more quickly, increasing road safety. And you also don't need to put down as much dry salt, so you're reducing the amount of overall salt that you're putting into the environment. However, the city was limited in funds on the type of systems that they could actually put on the trucks to spray this brine as well as the number that they could purchase. We reached out to the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization to see if they had any grant opportunities for us, knowing that decreasing the amount of chlorides in our environment was a very strong priority for their organization. They found a capital project grant for us in order to improve on the equipment that we would have been able to buy. The capital project grant that MWMO has offered is in the amount of $80,557. And the city would use this money to purchase four advanced brine application systems. These would be automated systems in which the driver could control the concentration of salt that they were putting down. And it would automatically adjust this concentration relative to the driver's speed as well as completely stop the system when the driver was at a standstill. The system can be monitored and calibrated so that we know how much salt is going down on the road and we can adjust it depending on the road conditions. The money would also be used to purchase automatic vehicle location systems, which is a GPS software, GPS technology that connects in with the cloud so that we can see not only how much salt is going down on the overall trip, but in each specific location within the city. It'll allow us to track our fleet as it moves through the city and download a report after the fact as well, where we can see where our trucks have been, which is really important for optimizing our routes, ensuring that no spots have been missed, reducing needs to double back. From an insurance perspective, we can check where our trucks were at a specific, any specific time. And we can really calibrate the amount of salt put down at any given location based on the real-time weather conditions. The final thing the grant would be used to purchase is for an anti-ice trailer. This would be a trailer that connects to one of the trucks to the, and sprays brines. So the city could go out in advance of a winter weather event and spray the brine, which prevents the, an initial amount of ice buildup. So it's a more proactive strategy rather than solely reactive. And by placing brine down and preventing that initial accumulation of ice, you use less chlorides overall. With these best management practices, we're expecting to reduce the amount of salt that we put down between 30 and 40% per plow, which will result in $10,600 in annual savings. We're also expecting to have improved safety and service. The brine will work a lot faster than just plain dry salt. We'll be able to track our trucks. We'll be able to respond to areas in need faster. And they'll also be more efficient, especially with the use of this GPS technology. This grant does not require a cash match. However, the city would pay the $200 per year per truck data licensing fee to use the GPS software. We'd also be partnering with MWMO on increased education related to smart salting. Anybody who puts salt down is a, you know, should, should understand the potential implications of using salt and be aware of how to smart, salt smartly. The big points in that are you really need less salt than you think you do. Usually maintaining three inches between each grain of salt is enough to activate and melt. So you buying a hand spreader is a really great way just to make sure you're not over-salting. Using the right tools, can you use a shovel instead of salt? And knowing at what temperature salt works. Most traditional salts do not work, or traditional salt does not work below 15 degrees Fahrenheit. And there are some other salt blends that will work between zero and 15 degrees. But usually when you get down into negative temperatures, salt doesn't work at all. And so we'll be working on education around that to just understand how to smart, salt smartly. I'd like to take some questions now and then recommend that the council approve the grant agreement with the MWMO for the purchase of these smart salting VMPs.
Thank you for your presentation. The council will have questions.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Workin, I just, I just think this is such a great project. $80,000 grant in what we pay $1,000 for the little cards, basically. So what a great project and less salt. And so to me, it was well worth having you make that. So I'm glad you had the presentation. So just one question. So when, can you use the brine? Salt, it's not more effective at different, is it, at different temperatures versus just salt it is? Because I could only see this part of your head going down, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, yes, it does actually reduce the melting point temperature of the road salt, so it is effective at lower temperatures.
A significant difference in, in temperatures or?
I want to say it's about five to 10 degrees is kind of the, the difference. So we'll, we'll be able to provide a higher level of service. The other thing is, you know, part of, I think part of that five to 10 degrees that's estimated is, is Rachel kind of termed it the cast. I think it's, it's basically cast aside or, you know, bounce of, of the salt, you know? So minimizing that by wetting or mixing a wet, having a wet-dry mix reduces the effective temperature of the salt brine and traditional chloride mix.
I, I just want to add kudos to all the work that you've done and, I mean, what a great service. And why is, how could salt go up 19% in a year?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, we were informed that there was a strike at one of the processing facilities, which is what accounts for the increase on the purchase price.
Sounds like a story to me.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, I'll tell you that salt is pretty volatile. It's a lot like gas, fuel. Some years ago, we had, if you remember, we had trouble getting river cargo because of some work that was happening on the locks and the price of salt skyrocketed that winter and nobody could get it. You couldn't get it from a second supplier. So, you know, we, and I will tell you that the year that, the test year, last year, where we had $52,000 in expense, that's probably a lower than average year. I'm, I'm certain it's a lower than average year. My guess is that's about 15 to 20% lower than typical. And we did have some, we did have some events last year, but if you remember, they were pretty intense and short-lived and we didn't have like a long, you know, long thaw in the spring where, you know, we had icy conditions, you know, throughout the spring, so.
Then one more question. So there's four trucks, so will they be out in all different areas of the city? How do you, how will you?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, yes. I mean, we'll, I think part of the grant being, you know, having that GPS system and that tracking data, that's going to help us to optimize those four routes. We'd love to do it on all of our trucks. I think four was the right number for the grant. The, the real, the really great thing about this grant is, you know, we, we can go to this system on our own. But because of our capital equipment rotation, it'll take us 15 years to get our trucks retrofitted in the most efficient manner. With this kind of additional cash, if you will, we can retrofit our trucks immediate, or four of our trucks immediately, the majority of our larger dump truck and, you know, salt sand fleet. So it's really going to give us a boost. It doesn't mean that we can, that we would stop at four. If we find it effective and cost-effective and we get a good return, we may, you know, continue with our other trucks.
And then the anti-icing trailer is something you could obviously use on some of those roads that have more hills and more ups and downs.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, we have some, you know, there's some experience that we've had with this, but I think technology has improved with the road sensing equipment. That's part of this grant as well. So we're going to be able to anticipate in a little more accurate fashion when those events come. The, the real risk with the anti-icing is you lay it down and the storm doesn't materialize. And so kind of going off the standard forecast that, you know, anti-icing has come about, you know, 20 years ago. And, you know, some cities use it more effectively than others, but you really, the, the effectiveness is determined by the forecast and how accurate it is. But, you know, kind of with our, our. But, you know, kind of with our, our newer technology and these road sensors and some things and some elements in the grant, we're kind of maximizing that forecast in our prediction. And so that's going to help us to use it effectively.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion or questions, a motion will be in order.
I move to, to approve the capital project grant agreement, two zero two one eight two four with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for Smart Salting. Best practices found on pages thirty-six through?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, thank you.
Have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Leads us to item number eleven D, also removed from consent, was item number ten. Mr. Wysoko has an answer to your question. Councilmember Bulcom.
Thank you.
Yes, the question was with regard to the dur therapy, and that was Cynthia Miller is the dur massage business, and that was a word processing error that omitted it from this list, but it's, I heard from Deb Skogan, our city clerk, and she said it's Cynthia Miller dur massage.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, a motion would be in order.
I move the business license list with addition under massage therapy of Cynthia Miller endure massage. Second?
Motion, we have a second. I expect there's no other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Let's lead us to number twelve under new business. Mr. Hickok, this must be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this is mine. And we did have a nice opportunity, as we talked about the rezoning, to really get to know this project a bit better. And let me explain a little bit about this next action, which is the TOD master plan portion of this development. There are really three land use items that are being requested to allow this development on the property at sixty-fifty Main Street. There is the rezoning, that S2 rezoning that we just talked about. As you know, S2 is a redevelopment that requires a master plan, and it's one that has some flexibility in the zoning in terms of setbacks and some of the standard zoning that you're familiar with. But in exchange, we get added density architecture, some interesting things in exchange that we think are very, very nice for the development. The plat was to create the new lots for each portion of the development, including a lot for Metro Transit parking. And then finally, this TOD master plan. Like the S2, the TOD master plan has a master plan that is approved and is something that is used as the, basically the schematic for the development as it moves forward in the future. This land use will allow construction of two-hundred-and-seventy units of mixed residential within three buildings. The phased project will allow construction of a ninety-five unit market rate building, a one-hundred-and-three unit independent senior building, and a seventy-two unit mixed income or affordable multifamily building. As we learned, the petitioner, Carol Maddy did a very nice job earlier this evening of explaining this for us, that the petitioner has learned the process, working through the construction estimates, cost of the building, or the senior building, has caused them to reconsider the footings and foundation of the building and basically add a story while reducing the footprint on the building. Total number of parking stalls will remain the same at one-hundred-and-sixty-two. There's a reduction of thirty-six underground parking stalls, however. Those stalls have been added to the surface parking area, keeping the total at the same amount, no net loss, one-hundred-and-sixty-two. To give you a little bit of a sense of the difference here, we've got the old site plan on the left of your screen. On the right of your screen is the new site plan. One is colored, of course, and the other is not. But I think you get a general sense of the difference here. Really, the footprint from north to south on that westernmost building has been truncated, but the number of units have remained the same by adding a story. The other two buildings are four stories. This won't be out of place. It will, quite frankly, look very nice in the Fridley Station Village having three four-story buildings. Since our last meeting, a traffic study was done right here with Spec Consulting Engineering. We'll be here to talk about the traffic a little bit for you. It tells us about the roadways, intersections, what will be acceptable, and this project isn't expected to result in any real detriment to our surrounding traffic environment. The recommendations that were given relate to making sure bicycle parking is accessible and available, the drop-off circles at each of the building are sufficiently signed and striped, and encouraging onsite loading, unloading to occur outside of the peak periods rather than during its busiest times on this site. In our TOD master analysis in 2011, a transit-oriented overlay district was created and then approved by council. The subject properties are within the TOD overlay district. TOD overlay allows for flexibility when designing a development project like this. It encourages dense-mixed development and pedestrian-friendly developments. It also created a nice opportunity for lifecycle housing for people of different income levels and with different housing space needs. And it is within one-half mile of the train station, in this case, right on the doorstep of the train station. Within your packet is a list of all the performance standards the petitioner is required to meet as part of the TOD project, and you can see it's a real test. You need to make sure that your project fits the TOD in order to be there. Some of those standards are related to lot coverage, setbacks, height, facade articulation, building face, parking, landscape sidewalks, and lighting. The petitioner has designed this project. It meets the TOD standards and will achieve what the city was hoping for and the HRA was hoping for in the development of this land. Planning Commission did review this TOD eighteen dash oh-one in conjunction with other land uses that are being requested and were mentioned here at their September nineteenth meeting. The commission recommended approval of the master plan and added one stipulation requiring a fence be installed between the project and Parsons Electric to the south. Carol Maddy and the folks from Sherman have had good discussions with our Parsons Electric neighbors, and there will be a very nice solution when this is developed. With that, staff recommends the concurrence with the planning commission, that the city of council approve the resolution in your packet on pages one thirteen through one fifteen, and the addition of the exhibit C, which you received tonight and was on your DS. Again, I would mention that Bryant is here from Spec Consulting relative to the parking. You might have remembered that at the planning commission, there was a gentleman that was wondering about intersections and parking and so forth. Bryant would be here to respond to that, and of course, our representatives from Sherman are here as well. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any of your questions. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hickok. Council have any questions before I ask the presenters to come up to the podium?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hickok, could you put the map back up? Because my color's in my book. I see yellow, I don't see orange. So can you just go over the, can you go over the lots for me?
The lot splitting? Sure. I think that it would work best, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, if we take a look at the one without the green, without the landscape colored in. And you can see in that, there's kind of a gray background, and there's some red dividing lines between the lots. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see kind of an upside-down L-shaped lot. That is the lot that would remain in a large part for the Metro Transit folks. It would be eighty stalls. It's a reduction in stalls from three-thirty to eighty stalls, right sizing that eastern side parking lot to better match the parking that exists while allowing an additional thirty stalls to what we see as a typical average day there. Remembering that there is also parking on the west side, and there's a tunnel to connect the two, so we don't feel that this is really diminishing the value of the transit parking. It's reshaping it a bit. Then to the right of that, you'll see another kind of reverse L-shaped parcel. That is the market rate, market rate development, right at the corner of Main Street and Sixty-first. That is a project that has an outdoor swimming pool, and it has some other very nice amenities to make it an attractive addition to this, this part of the city. To the south of that, then, you'll see a parcel that is shaped, again, kind of L-shaped, and it's a reverse L, and it is a mixed income building there. It is nearly the same size as the market rate to the north, but just a bit different shape. And a very nice building, again, with parking below. In all cases, there's parking below the buildings, and then there is a four-story residential appearance above. Finally, you've got the elongated western southwest parcel there that is the home of the senior lot. The senior housing would be on that lot, and it runs really parallel with the railroad tracks. There is that kind of box in the middle, a rectangle as part of the architecture. That's actually an interior swimming pool for the development that will be a very nice amenity for seniors, we believe. Does that answer, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bulcom, the questions about the lots themselves?
Right, and we just, our colors in our book are like, I'm like, that looks yellow to me and not orange, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? Do we have a presenter here tonight for the?
Traffic.
Yep, for the traffic, sorry.
Hi, my name is Bryant Tvesek. I'm with Spec Consulting in Minneapolis and working with Scott on this one. We studied the traffic and parking for the development. Our general process for these types of studies, we go out there, we take counts at the site, we try to get a good feel of what's going on, and then we forecast what's going to happen with the development. So in this case, our counts added, the first thing I'll mention is we took counts for the ins and outs of the Metro Transit lot today, just to make sure. I know they've already done the analysis, but we did our own check on it. If they shrink that lot, are they still going to have enough parking for what they have? We found through our couple days' accounts, they had about forty people parking there. Their parking lot is projected at eighty, so they have double what they're using right now, so plenty of space for the transit users for today. As we look towards the future, the way we project traffic, we look towards studies of other areas. So just as they have their own market studies that they do, we study things from the traffic side of things. We look at what other apartments, what other residential things are doing, both nationally, and we do our own studies locally here. And so that forecasting, what we found, the two things we pay attention to are the peak hours, your morning commute and your afternoon commute. In the morning, it's going to add about seventy vehicles to that morning commute, scattered through the different directions as people go where they need to. In the afternoon, it's about a hundred vehicles, and to put that in a little bit of context, that's an additional five vehicles every three minutes, if you can follow me on the math there. Another way to think about it is if you are on a side street and you pull up to a signal at university right when it turns red, by the time it goes through everything else and gets back to you, you would have seen five cars. So in comparison to what you would actually see there, that's not a lot of traffic that we're adding. So with that added traffic, we added to the counts that we take. We looked at several different intersections along Main Street and then the university and Sixty-first Street, as well as the access points for the development itself, added this new traffic in, ran it through our models, making sure that it matched what we were observing out there for existing, forecasting that forward, and basically, per our standards, all the operations were acceptable. We didn't find any, any red flags or anything from the development based on that. More importantly, based on the earlier discussion, we also took a look at the parking. The way we look at parking, we do it two different ways. First thing, obviously, is look at what the city code is. What are you requiring the development to have for your code? They are meeting that demand based on what they're providing, so that was our first check of it. The second one is very similar to how we do traffic. Based on our studies, we also look at what's the average demand? What do we see for other areas where people are parked overnight? And with that demand, again, we're seeing plenty of parking for what they have. So again, no, no red flags, no issues from our standpoint on the traffic and parking. We did have some minor recommendations, as Scott mentioned. We wanted to make sure that there was good bicycle parking there, some signing and striping around the drop-offs, just to make sure it's clear for everybody what's going on in those areas, no confusion. And then the standard one of kind of making sure your deliveries, if you can, occur outside the peak hour, let's not add them up to those peaks. Try to get it to those off-peak times. So that was a very quick summary of what we did, but I'm very happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. The council have any questions?
Just one question I have on the, on senior building.
Yes.
And I realize this is commuter rail and not light rail, so the trains only run morning, noon, and evening. Is there any kind of a sound barrier in the apartments? Because they're pretty close to the tracks.
So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Barnett, I think I would defer to our architect on that, and they'd be probably better able to explain that piece of it.
And I don't know if that's necessarily an issue or not, but.
Sure.
It's pretty close to the railroad tracks.
Okay, sure.
I defer on now one, if you want to come up and answer.
Thank you.
For the senior portion, typically for the units that are closest to the train tracks, we specify a window type that has, that's meant to absorb a higher STC rating, so it will reduce the impact of sound right up against the train tracks. The units on the far side of the corridor facing east, they're going to have less impact to the trains running by, but we do take that into account.
Okay, that's just a question I had. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions relating to the traffic study?
Mr. Mayor, so the bottom line is we think that this, there's not going to be any log jams of traffic, and with the amount of units that are there in the peak in AM and PM times, we're not going to, it's not going to be a huge impact to the overall.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question of Brian?
He might have covered it in his presentation, but I might have missed it.
Was there, did you look at the signal at Sixty-first and Main as far, or the intersection at Sixty-first and Main and whether there's a signal warranted there? I know we had a question from the public on that.
Yes, we did. So we, I didn't mention that, thank you for the question. We did look at that. We looked at what we call signal warrants, which are basically thresholds for when we think a signal would be a good idea, and in this case, they do not meet them. So we would not recommend a signal at this location.
Thank you for indulging.
Are we anywhere near needing them?
No.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you, Jim. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions of the persons in the audience relative to the Sherman property? None? Motion will be in order.
So I, just for a point of clarification, I also want to include in the resolution, pages one through fifteen, but also exhibit C. That's here tonight, okay. So if it's so in order, I move a resolution approving a transit-oriented development master plan TOD eighteen dash oh-one by Sherman Associates Development LLC on behalf of the property owner, the City of Fridley Housing and Redevelopment Authority, to allow the development of the properties generally located at sixty-fifty Main Street Northeast with the pages one through fifteen and include exhibit C that was presented to us tonight. Second?
The motion is second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Thanks for coming out this evening. Item number thirteen is under new business, and is that yours, Public Safety?
When, so when do we start seeing dirt moving there and things happening?
We're crossing our fingers for the spring, and we'll make sure to invite you guys to the groundbreaking.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to under new business, item number thirteen. Is that yours?
Yes, it is.
Public Safety Director, Brian Werke.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Fridley Public Safety Department and the New Brighton Public Safety Department have agreed to join into an agreement to provide automatic aid or closest fire unit for portions of the city of New Brighton and Fridley. Ramsey County Dispatch will now request a fire engine from Fridley for any confirmed structure fires in New Brighton, and in return, Fridley would get automatic aid from New Brighton for any confirmed structure fires in Fridley. The Fridley, the, the fire department- The Fridley, the fire department, our fire department currently operates under an automatic aid policy with SBM, Spring Lake Park Lane, Mounds View, Columbia Heights, and St. Anthony Fire Departments. As of the, at the end of 2018, we will be discontinuing our auto aid with St. Anthony, since we do not use them a whole lot and they're driving through New Brighton. So we'll just be going into auto aid with New Brighton. We still can request St. Anthony on a mutual aid request if we need to, and vice versa. Automatic aid overall is critical to a quick response and providing enough firefighters for any structure fire we may have in Fridley. This automatic aid resolution will not change our staffing levels here in Fridley. And we think it'll provide a better coverage for our Fridley community. We are not anticipating a large effect on the number of fire calls either in Fridley or New Brighton that we, that either one of us will respond to in the future. This auto aid agreement will go into effect on January first of this year, 2019. And staffs recommending adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Brian Worky.
Yes.
The council have questions? Seems like a good deal.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question, sorry. On the, on the resolution on page one seventeen, so it says where, let's see, one, two, three, the fourth whereas is. So it says Ramsey County Dispatch will request an emergency response unit from Fridley for any confirmed structure. What's in the area mean designated? Is that just verbiage or what does it say?
There are areas designated for this. So if you want to picture it, when New Brighton is called to Fridley, New Brighton will be covering all the way from the border, all the way over to Highway sixty-five. And we will be covering the area north of New Brighton, all the way over to Silver Lake Road. So that it's designated areas when we'll, and it's the closest one called when needed. So that's what that means.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If none?
If none, I would move the resolution authorizing execution of mutual and agreement to provide for the automatic dispatch of the closest emergency response unit, regardless of jurisdictional boundaries, found on pages one sixteen through one twenty-three.
Second?
There's no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Under new business, item number fourteen. This must be yours, Mr. Kozlowski.
Excuse me. Yeah, the, I don't have a presentation. The item before you is in regard to a signal agreement with MinDOT and Anoka County that will enable replacement of the ramp signals and associated lighting on East River Road and Interstate six ninety-four. I will tell you that Anoka County had heard us at, after our last signal agreement with them on East River Road in Mississippi. Mayor, your comments were heard. They have amended their policy for replacement of signals. And as a matter of fact, they will be issuing us credit on that prior agreement in conformance with their updated policy that we asked on your behalf to look into. That policy also reduces the city's contribution in this signal agreement from what would have been about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to about eighteen thousand dollars. And so it's our recommendation, our happy recommendation to have the council approve this agreement for execution and submission back to MinDOT and Anoka County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. That answers my question and seeing it in here, why we're even involved in it. But because it's not our jurisdiction, but I guess it makes sense. Is there any other questions from council?
I say kudos. This is incredible. I mean, really, Jim, you and your staff should be commended for this, and this is a long time coming. So excellent work. I mean, huge savings for their staff, so. Do we send them a thank you note or anything? Or just keep it under the radar?
Hang on a second.
Your Honor, I just want to also reiterate that and just point out to the public that this is a way that the staff just saved a hundred and seven thousand dollars on something that otherwise would have been just passed through. And even though we'd be spending our state aid funds for this, it'd be funds that we couldn't spend on other projects within the city that we normally would do. So I know that we're always very cost-conscious, and sometimes we look at savings and ways of cutting back. But here's a way that staff and Jim have fought to find ways to improve. And of course, the county's gotta adjust to that. But, you know, doggone it, we don't have a horse in the race here. This is not our intersection. And yet, because of policies that are out there, they cause us to spend some money. And, you know, that unfairness is always out there. It'll never stop. But here, we just trimmed a hundred and seventy thou, a hundred and seven thousand dollars out of what would have been our liability. And we'll be able to do things within our boundaries at our, our projects as a result. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you.
So in order, I move a resolution approving the agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation for replacement of the existing traffic control signal at Interstate six ninety-four and East River Road, found on pages one twenty-five through one thirty-four.
Second?
Motion, we have a second. Is there any final discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries. Which leads us to informal status reports. I will report that, again, as I mentioned, this Saturday, ten a.m., please come to our dedication and open house. There will be some tours provided shortly after the dedication from about ten thirty to about noon. So hopefully you can come out and see the entirety of the facility. Just so you know, that we're not on the air live tonight, which is a little unusual for us. But we're still working with minor details, yet that will be corrected very shortly, so. Yeah. Only you few people in the audience that remain got the whole story instead of the viewing, listening audience, so. In fact, I've already got a comment on my texting about why, so. But always a few snafus and snags when you get into something of this nature and size. I appreciate your attendance this evening. And is there any other informal items that the staff or council have report?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the, all the citizens for this beautiful building. You were all part of it. You were all behind us. Well, maybe not all of you, but a lot of you were behind us. And then the city staff, from the city manager on down, and all of our department, and actually every staff member, because they all had some input in how to make an efficient building here, make a building that we can be proud of and continue with the housing development around here. So kudos to everyone that had some part in that, and that's each and every person, all the city staff. And so I just want to thank them, so.
Okay, great.
And I'll, I'll say ditto to that. And with that, I will move that we adjourn.
And I'll second that, but I also want to say that, thank you to everybody as well for making this a lovely facility.
If there's nothing further, I have a motion for, in a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for attending your city council. Good evening.